Broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
Good evening. I'm Good Marie Hansen, Superintendent of Orange Unified School District, and I'm really happy to have this evening with you to discuss our Villa Park High School feeder area town hall for our elementary and middle schools' facility planning. And this evening with us, we have five of our seven board members. We have Ms. Kathy Moffett, who is the board president, and we have Vice President Ms. Andrea Yamasaki, Board Clerk Chris Erickson, and Board Members Anna Page and Angie Rumsey. So I'm really pleased that they're here with us. They're able to follow along and listen to our stakeholders and learn about the input, as well as get more information on the plans for our schools. So this evening, we'll be discussing the master plan and focusing on our elementary and middle schools. This is the culmination, this town hall, of about a year and a half in planning with the Facilities Master Plan Committee of about ninety representatives from our community and our staff that have come together over the course of this last year and a half to begin to look at the factors that would develop the vision for a facilities master plan. And much of what you'll see here this evening that will be presented by our partners, LPA Architects, are the conceptual design behind the educational programs for our elementary and middle schools. You'll see each facility, each elementary and middle school in the Villa Park feeder school pattern. This Facilities Master Plan is part of our strategic plan, the Orange Unified Edge. It's part of 4.0, Efficient Use of Fiscal Capital, which is some of the most important work besides educating our children and providing a quality educational program. Making sure that we are good stewards of our educational tax dollars, as well as our properties, is very important. And we have tremendous assets in Orange Unified. We have wonderful school sites, large fields, large properties that we want to maintain for future generations and ensure that they are representative of the best educational settings for the future for our children. So that's what this process is about. It's a vision for the future with a master plan for all of those schools. And then our Board of Education will continue to study the input from our community in a study session, and eventually, they will approve the plan. And then, in subsequent meetings, they'll make decisions about prioritizing which schools will go first, because we do have, you know, twenty-seven elementary schools and six middle schools. It's a large group of schools, and there'll be phases. There'll be timelines. There'll be decisions to be made on the funding at a later date. But we're very excited to have this process. I want to thank our staff, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Harvey, and Ms. Gieta for their tremendous work on the Facilities Master Plan. So I'm gonna have Mr. Rivera and his team also share a little bit about the process. And if anyone needs, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this before, anyone who needs Spanish translation on the screen there is a number you can call with the conference ID in order to get simultaneous translation over the phone for this presentation. Thank you very much. Mr. Rivera?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hanson. First of all, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. We have been on this venture of updating our master plan for over a year and a half. The last time we updated our master plan was in the two thousand four or five year, I'm sorry, two thousand three, four year. So it's been seventeen years. So many of you probably were not part of the last time we've updated the master plan. So we're taking this work seriously and been very diligent about the work and have spent thousands of hours in helping prepare the plan that you're gonna be seeing tonight. That work has been very tedious work, and I want to show my appreciation to the facility staff who has taken the leadership role. For those of you that do not know, our district is over seven hundred acres in totality, in terms of the property. So we're about two and a half times the size of Disneyland. So when you're looking at facilities of that size, it's a daunting task to plan and coordinate for how can we best utilize those fields and facilities for the best interests of our students. And I appreciate the work that's been done. And Mr. Harvey, is there any other comments you would like to make?
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Just one, a couple of comments. I just want to thank all of the members of our Facilities Master Plan Committee who started meeting in person well back when this was, it was okay to do that. We even had meals together, and we're really able to have a really nice collaborative process. And of course, COVID-19 happened, and we were still able to go forward with the process. And everyone was great in showing up for our virtual meetings and was able to continue this forward. So I just want to thank you for hanging on with us and going through this, even though there are a lot of things going on. And, you know, we really appreciate moving it forward. And then, just a little caveat and a disclaimer, I guess we'd say. Tonight is more about the elementary schools and the middle schools. I know there were quite a few people that had questions maybe about Villa Park High School. So while Villa Park High School still has an active master plan, which was created back in two thousand fifteen and sixteen in preparation for Measure S, that continues on, and you're seeing some of the work in Measure S that's happening now because of that. So that will continue on the campus through Measure S and then any other, you know, facilities, funding after that that can help Villa Park get to its master plan in the end. But just wanted to mention that, throw out a caveat, and just thank you all for joining us tonight. And so sorry that we had to postpone. I know that there was a lot going on last week. So thank you for hanging on with us and giving us opportunity on this Monday to be with you. So I'll turn it over to Imasira Guerra. Imasira has been with the district for about a year, but we threw her right into the mix as the quarterback after coming to us from Irvine. She has a lot of great experience, has done an amazing job with our consultants, LPA. So I'll let Imasira introduce LPA, and we'll go forward with our master plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Again, I'm Imasira Guerra, and I am the Facilities Planning Analyst for the district. I do want to introduce the team that's gonna be presenting today, but I also want to give a little bit of background to say that LPA Architects started this process with us in the fall of two thousand nineteen. So a large part of the process was the fact finding, data finding. And as Mr. Rivera said, we have several properties. We have forty-one-plus school facilities. Every site was walked, every site was measured and photographed. And we did principal interviews. We also did staff interviews, a lot of focus group interviews, to really help understand not only the way that the schools function, but also some of the other issues in and around the facilities in terms of ADA access, safety, as well as the aging facilities. So there was a lot of work that went into what you all are gonna be viewing today. As Dr. Hanson said, these are conceptual diagrams that you're gonna be viewing. And to walk us through those plans tonight, as well as giving an overview of our Facilities Master Plan process, is going to be the LPA team. Leading the team is Jim Kissel. He's the Principal and Director of the K-12 Education Studio here in Southern California. We also have Sam Lim, who is Associate Managing Director, as well as Andrea Pippen, who is the Educational Facilities Planner. And then, starting the presentation tonight, will be Sabrina Lehman, who is the Project Manager.
That's great.
And Imasira, may I just say one thing before you start, Sabrina? I just wanted to thank Joe Irvin and Kathleen Corella, who are an active part of this presentation. They've been partnering also with facilities and with LPA on the educational components. And you'll see Mr. Irvin and Ms. Corella also come on during the presentation to provide support to the architects as they explain some of our educational programs. And there's Mr. Irvin. Thank you so much. He's been very active on all of our town hall meetings. So just wanted to acknowledge him and Ms. Corella and their work. Thank you. Go ahead, Sabrina.
Sorry, Sabrina, to expand on that, because I like to talk too. It's not always that you have a smooth relationship between facilities and education. A lot of times, they'll challenge each other. But we had a wonderful, you know, ability to get together and to have the same visions and to really make it a smooth discussion. So I just want to thank Joe and Kathleen and the whole team for just being very understanding of what we had to do. There's a lot of facilities, but they had the vision, and it was really easy to kind of ask them a lot of questions because they've been formulating this for a long time. And we didn't realize that. We thought, oh, these are gonna be new concepts. But thank you so much, and it's always good to have the education and the facilities team on the same side. So, sorry, Sabrina, go ahead.
No worries, no worries. Well, thank you. This was a, we are very pleased and privileged to be here with you tonight. My name is Sabrina Lehman, and I'm the PM for the project. I did want to spend a couple of minutes just talking through logistics for this evening. So our quick agenda for this evening, we'll go through some meeting protocols. We'll talk about the FMP process summary, so what that process is and what does that mean. We'll touch on the OUSD Vision for Innovation, which is an important component of what you'll see tonight. We'll talk about the EdSpecs. Andrea will speak to that more specifically about the sort of baseline diagram or concepts that are behind some of the actual project and place-specific diagrams that we'll be sharing with you this evening. We'll talk about the role and next steps for engagement, school site committees and next steps. And then ultimately, what we really would like to dig into this evening are the draft diagrams, which have been referred to. These are our first draft concepts for the school sites for this feeder. And we'd like to sort of spend some time, talk through those and work through those, and we'll be taking questions. So let's dive right in. Next slide, please. All right, so the purpose of tonight's evening is to provide background information regarding the Facilities Master Plan. I'd just like to highlight briefly that we're looking at long-term goals. This is not truly about short-term reopenings, but more importantly, the five-to-ten-year plan. As we mentioned, these are the first sort of draft conceptual plans for the school sites. And we'd like to use this opportunity to address initial questions that you may have with respect to those plans. And then talk about what are next steps in the engagement by the community moving forward. Next slide. Couple of logistical items. In order to make sure that we're all engaged and able to participate, I'd like to highlight, the most important icon on your screen is the orange arrow that allows you to open up the dashboard. If you'd like to ask a question, there's a little hand with a green arrow. Raise your hand, kind of like in school, if you'd like to say something, and we'll unmute you. And then ultimately, perhaps the most important piece to this is the question box at the bottom. So as we go through the presentation, as you have questions on the things that you're hearing and seeing, we'd love it if you'd type those in. We have a great engaged group of people, both on the district side and on LPA's side, that are waiting to sort of respond to those questions. We encourage you all to ask them, and then check back on the responses because you'll be able to see both as we move along. And ultimately, oh, sorry, before we move on, your voice matters. And that's something that we really wanted to highlight for this evening is that this is not just a presentation. We are actively looking for your feedback, both tonight and moving forward. We always value both, if you're able to join us, raise your hand and ask questions in person or type questions in the question box. This is a participatory process this evening. So we really look forward to engagement by the group that's joining us this evening. And then, online and sort of following up to this, if you have additional questions or comments, you are able to, there's a couple of different options. You're able to contact your school site committee. You can reach out to the Facilities and Planning Department. And you can also visit the Facilities and Planning website at orangeusd.org/fmp. Or you can, if you're technologically savvy and advanced, you can use the QR code that we provided below. All right, so to kick us off tonight, just a quick icebreaker question to sort of get everybody's communication going and moving and grooving. So what hobby did you pick up in two thousand twenty? So we have a couple of options. Baking, cooking, hiking, fitness, reading, gardening, art, and painting. And Erin will open up the poll now. If you do have the Zoom call in full screen, you'll need to minimize in order to see the poll. And if you're able to vote, we'd love to hear from you. And then Erin will keep us updated on where we are with responses.
Absolutely. We're at thirty-one percent of our attendees have voted. We're gonna wait just a few more moments, let those numbers kind of even out and slow down. All right, we'll give it just another moment, and then we'll close out the poll. All right, we're gonna go ahead and close it now.
Oh, very close tie, similar to one of our other feeder sites. Baking and cooking, hiking and fitness, and perhaps those in tandem. So that's wonderful. And at this point, I'll pass it off to Jim. He'll get us rolling and going for today.
Thank you, Sabrina. So what we want to do here tonight is give you a brief summary of the FMP process that we've been going through for the last eighteen months to arrive at the site diagrams that we're sharing this evening. I should say that these site diagrams represent all the information that we've gathered to date, overlaid onto the school campuses to develop a master plan proposal. They are very much just a first draft, and we are expecting them to change through our interactions with the school site committees. But in essence, we began the master plan process in August of two thousand nineteen, and we're all the way over to the right to that dotted line here in two thousand twenty-one, having the town halls for the draft site master plan diagrams. And we really went through three phases of work. In two thousand nineteen, it was about information gathering and data analysis and research. In two thousand twenty, it was about synthesizing that information. And here in two thousand twenty-one, it's really about developing that final plan and those plan recommendations. So from our town halls here, both a little over a week ago with the other three feeder areas and tonight here in Villa Park, the plans will be going back to the campuses. And Andrea will talk more about that in a minute and how they will be at the school sites. And we'll be interacting one-on-one with the school site committees about a month from now, near the end of February, to collect your input on the plans and make any modifications we need to make to the plan to have it representative of the school site needs and vision. Then we'll be going with a draft plan in April to the board, and then a final master plan to the board in May, June of this year. And next slide, Andrea? So when we started the master plan process, the district shared a number of challenges with us that the district is facing and things that we wanted to make sure that we addressed within the Facilities Master Plan. Many of the elementary and middle school sites are older and aging. The high schools are a different process. They went through a master planning process several years ago that led to the district's current bond program. And improvements are now occurring at those campuses. So the high school master plans will be rolled into this document based on the work that was done by each of the four architects at each of the high schools. So we'll be including that information, but we've been specifically looking at the elementary and middle school sites at this time. So many of those sites are aging. There's not been a lot of facilities dollars comparatively to some of your neighboring districts spent on the facilities. Some sites are not appropriate for next-gen learning. In other words, the buildings may have reached, in some cases, the end of their useful life and might be difficult to reconfigure for how learning takes place today. There is a potential decline in enrollment in the future. And many of the surrounding districts are rebuilding facilities and innovating programs. So districts today are competing for their students, not only with other districts, but also with private schools and other educational providers. If we can go to the next slide. So all of this led to a desire by the district to innovate and to move the district forward. And one of the first things the district did as part of that was to develop the OUSD Edge, or District Strategic Plan, of which facilities is a component of that. When we first started the master plan, we asked every group that we interacted with, what were some of their highest priorities? And what did we, and what did people think that the master plan needed to address? So you can see that Wordle over there to the right that represents words that occurred in everybody's statements. And the size of the word represents how often it occurred. So that led to a series of guiding principles that has really helped to shape how we're proceeding on the Facilities Master Plan. And so the first is this, is that students are at the center of the district mission, and we want to embrace the OUSD Edge Strategic Plan and translate its initiatives into facilities. We want to engage the community in the process to foster ownership and support. And that's both district community, school site community, and neighborhood communities. We want to develop an actionable, long-term plan grounded in OUSD's vision and built on previous accomplishments and successes. We want to create a positive student experience through development of innovative, adaptable, high-quality learning environments. We want to construct equitable, safe, welcoming, and inclusive facilities that cultivate student, staff, and community pride. And most importantly, I think one of the things we heard very clearly from a number of groups is we want to promote stewardships through development of a responsible plan based on integrity and excellence. So one of the things we heard from many of the groups is that this plan wants to be implementable and that the recommendations within the plan want to be achievable. If we could go to the next slide. So those guiding principles translated into actionable goals for the Facilities Master Plan. And working with the district, with the District Steering Committee, with the Facilities Master Plan Committee and other groups within the district and school sites, we came up with some actionable goals based on those guiding principles. And these include innovation and planning and programs, providing educational options for students within their own communities, want to retain resident students. We want to expand middle school enrollment. We want to increase capture of students that are currently not attending the district. We want to decrease Westside/E-Side student movement by providing those educational options equitably within each of the communities. And as I said before, efficient use and good stewardship of the community's dollars. And the next slide. So some of the planning assumptions that this led to, as we've been going through the process, is one, providing the concept of equity and choice within each of the district's feeder communities. So within each feeder community, there would be a magnet campus that has a program focus which draws from a district-wide enrollment or catchment. It's very similar to McPherson K-8, that there would be academy campuses with a specialized program within each of the feeder areas. And they would have a program focus that draws from within the feeder community boundary. And that also then led to improvement tiers or different groupings of sites based on the type of work that was occurring at the campuses. And so the tier one is magnets and academies. Tier two is targeted enhancements, which includes facilities such as a new library or a new NPR or a new gym or other deficiencies being addressed at the campus. And tier three is modernization. We'd also be very respectful of any modernization that had occurred in the district to date. In terms of target enrollments, we're planning for elementary schools to be either four hundred and twenty or six hundred and thirty students based on the demographic projections. K-8 schools for those magnet campuses at nine hundred and middle schools at seven or nine hundred, depending upon the demographics. The next slide, Andy? And so I want to talk a little bit about what the tiers do and what the tiers don't do. The tiers do translate the OUSD Innovative Sites vision into proposals at the various campuses. And sites are grouped by like scopes of work and master plan approach. Each campus is getting a unique solution based on the needs of its site, the program at its site, any work or improvements that have occurred at that campus to date. So we're not applying a template at each campus or an equal number of dollars. It does vary based upon the needs of that particular site. And we want to recognize that facilities funding is not unlimited and that the district has had a culture of sharing of some shared facilities such as MPRs or stadiums or other types of those more expensive spaces to build. And that culture of sharing would continue in the future because you can't afford to build everything all at once. What the tiers do not do is they do not infer a strataation of projects based upon priority level or level improvement specified. So just because something's in tier one versus tier two or three doesn't mean it's going first. It also doesn't necessarily mean that a project in tier one is gonna be more expensive than a project in tier two. The tiers do not identify a date for potential improvements to begin once funding has been secured. That is the next step that occurs after the master plan. The master plan is really about establishing the need. Then the district then explores, okay, how do we pay for that need? And then what projects would go first, which would be conversations with the board and the community. The tiers do not dictate the approach to scope or budget differently between the various tiers, and they do not create a standard improvement template, as I said before. If we could go next slide. So over the last two weeks, we've been holding town halls, and this is the fourth and final for the Villa Park High School feeder community. We went alphabetically through the various communities. And now I'd like to turn it over to Joe Irvin and talk about the program vision for the various communities within the district.
Great, thank you so much. So tonight, I'll be reviewing the Villa Park High School feeder pattern area and specifically going into detail into some of our magnet and academy there. And then I'll be going into each of the other feeder patterns so you can see what the global look of Orange Unified School District could be. So we'll start with our tier one magnet. So once again, each of the feeder patterns for our high schools will receive a magnet school. And so the proposed magnet is at Taft, which will be our K-8 World Language Magnet. And then we have a tier one academy. And that tier one academy would be at the Olive TK through sixth Avid Academy. There would be tier two targeted enhancement schools, and those are in green on your map. The first is at Mill Canyon. And we'll be going into detail so you can see the plans for each of these schools at the end of the session. We have Serrano Elementary School and then Saravilla Middle School. And then we have our tier three modernization happening at Fletcher Elementary School and Villa Park Elementary School. And then we have a new gym for this feeder pattern proposed to be at the Saravilla site. And that would be for the entire feeder pattern to share its use. The next slide. So looking at our first, this is our tier one academy is at Olive TK through sixth grade. Olive will continue to have its current attendance boundary and will continue to house the current grade levels TK through sixth grade. It would continue to build strong college relationships to infuse the college-going culture at that school because it is our avid showcase school. Students have access to a career and college lab, and students will also have the opportunity to take multiple field trips to colleges throughout the year. We would build a strong Avid continuum, built from Olive to Saravilla and then to Villa Park High School. College tutors would participate in the classroom activities three times per week at the elementary site. And Olive Elementary would continue to be designated as an avid national demonstration school. Next slide. And then we have our magnet. So this would be the tier one proposed magnet school at the Taft site, turning Taft into a TK through eighth grade World Languages Magnet. This would pull Taft out of his current attendance boundary. And we would fill Taft to capacity with three classes of each grade level, kinder through fifth grade and three hundred and six through eighth grade students. Students accepted to Taft would be based on a lottery system. The Mandarin program at Fletcher has continued to grow over the years. So there is a potential of moving that program to the Taft World Languages Magnet based on the size needed. We would also be looking at having our middle school students taking language and CTE Mandarin classes. An additional immersion program would be added to the Taft site. We would like to see Latin, there's been a lot of talk about Latin because we want to make sure that we're keeping our students within the district. And so that would be a competitive program to add to our district programming. Portuguese has also been a language that's been talked about. Cultural events, we would bring cultural events to the community around that language focus. And all subject matter would be taught through that World Languages Magnet focus. Next slide. And then we have the other feeder patterns. So you can see that they're very similar in the fact that each feeder pattern has a magnet and academy as well as those targeted enhancement schools. So for our tier one magnet was at Crescent TK through eighth grade biomedical magnets. And then Running Springs would turn into an academy for international bachelors, TK through eighth grade. We have our tier two targeted enhancement schools, which would include Canyon Rim Elementary and Anaheim Hills Elementary School. And the tier three modernized schools for the Canyon area would be at El Rancho Charter Middle School, Canyon Hills, and Imperial Elementary School with a new gym for that feeder pattern located at the Crescent Magnet School. Next slide. For the El Medina High School theater pattern, the tier one magnet is in existence. It's McPherson, kinder through eighth grade. It is a STEM magnet school. We continue to be in existence there. The tier one academy is at Jordan Academy, again, already with an established dual immersion program for both computer science and Spanish. And then we have our tier two targeted enhancement schools, which include Esplanade Elementary School, La Vida Elementary School. La Vida Elementary School, and Panorama Elementary School. The tier three modernized schools would be Linda Vista Elementary School, Chapman Hills Elementary, Prospect Elementary School, the Parkside Education Center, and Santiago Charter Middle School with a new gym for that feeder pattern located at McPherson Magnet. And then our final slice of the district is that with our Orange High School theater pattern, our tier one magnet is proposed to be at the Yorba site, making Yorba a Kinder through eighth grade arts magnet. And then we have our tier one academy located both at Lamson, which would be a TK through eighth grade international baccalaureate academy, as well as California TK through sixth grade dual immersion Spanish, as well as Apple distinguished school. Our tier two targeted enhancement schools include Cambridge Elementary, Bear Haven Elementary, Richland Continuation High School, and Sycamore Elementary School. And then our tier three modernized schools include Handy Elementary, Palmyra Elementary, West Orange Elementary, and Portola Middle School with a new gym for this theater pattern potentially located at Richland Continuation High School. Next slide. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Joe. All right, I'm Andrea Pippen with LPA as an educational facilities planner. And I'll go through the educational specifications a little bit. So first, what these are. It's a component of the master plan that sets a baseline standard for all the different types of facilities that you find on a school campus. So for example, a classroom versus a library or media center versus a multipurpose room. This set of educational specifications will help to define what those spaces are, the furniture's types, finish types, and adjacencies, as well as technology packages that would go into these spaces in order to bring all of the facilities within Orange USD to the same kind of parity baseline once these projects are implemented. So I'll run through a few of the different spaces briefly here and give you an update of some of the changes that the district would like to pursue. For example, here at preschool, transitional kindergarten and kindergarten as well. These types of spaces really require additional amenities in them such as toileting facilities right adjacent to the room, shared workroom, additional storage. So what the educational specifications do is to, again, help to define these spaces, the size of the spaces and those appropriate amenities to serve the function of the room. So all sites will be planned for at least one transitional kindergarten classroom. At sites with a larger projected or planned enrollment, they'll receive two transitional kindergarten classrooms, and that's regardless of the current program at the site. So having more robust, larger spaces at each site gives that site some flexibility as to how they can use the spaces. So they can use the space for a first grade classroom if they need to. But again, when they need, when they have that bubble kind of coming through of transitional kinder or maybe additional kindergarten classrooms, they have those facilities to properly house those students. And the same goes for special education. So the district's vision to align with the strategic plan of living their values really brings the brings the students back to their neighborhood school regardless of the grade level they're in or regardless of the special programs that they need. So special education in Orange USD would be planned at the neighborhood site with at least one of the, you know, kind of these more robust facility type rooms planned for each campus. So each campus map you'll see at least one SDC Vermont severe. And again, these are much like the kindergarten rooms. They are sized appropriately and have the appropriate amenities to make it appropriate for special education. So in this case, it would be a large classroom area with a focus room. So the student can decompress safely, additional storage, and toileting facilities with a lift. Often the sites are, have a great need for a learning resource center. So this would be a purposefully built space for the uses such as speech psychologist, other, you know, RSP, other student support services that not only serve, well, they really serve the whole campus. Any student can use this space for kind of mental and mental wellness and educational support. So instead of the speech psychologists, you know, these types of counselors located in the nicest closet a school site has kind of spread all across the campus. This learning center model really gives them the suite of offices so that they can have those confidential meetings, they can hold a slightly larger conference or have, you know, small groups or this large, larger room here as a flex sensory room. So these purposefully built spaces, again, that really serve that function and the need of confidentiality with all of the uses that typically go along with what you see here on the screen. So in the educational specification, this is sized at about the size of two standard classrooms. And one of those would, according to the ed specs, have this flexible partition. So incorporating some flexibility within the space designs. And just a note here on the library, you'll see on the draft master plan diagrams, they're being referred to as a media center. So this is recognizing that the library, as we know it, is evolving into something that is much more tech-rich. So we're not saying that the books are going away. We're just saying now it's the next evolution that involves some more, you know, integrated technology. And then some, some pretty standard library components, like a quiet reading corner, the circulation desk, your area for printed resources and a flexible area that can, can hold small groups, large groups, whole classes, and more. So be a flexible tech-rich zone. Throughout the plans, you'll also see collaboration spaces. So think of these as, as rooms without walls, whether it's indoors or outdoors. These collaboration spaces really support the activities that happen within the classrooms and really serve as an extension of the classroom with the visibility in to these, between these collaboration spaces and the classrooms. The intended use of these is for, you know, a teacher during her lesson can send a small group out to work, you know, in tandem during class session, maybe, you know, spill out into that collaboration space to do small group work or single kind of heads-down study sessions. They can bring the whole class out into these collaboration zones, again, either indoors or a nice outdoor space that can accommodate a full-size class. But it really provides more flexibility and using those outdoor spaces at times for, for learning environments, really seeing every space as a learning opportunity space. When we get to more specialized spaces, we're looking at VAPA. You'll see on the plans rooms labeled as VAPA, and that is visual and performing arts. So this takes on many different shapes pending the school type. So at the elementary school, what VAPA represents is a classroom for art with the appropriate storage, a classroom for orchestra and strings, and a classroom for band. So these are larger than your typical classroom, highly flexible, and ideally would be co-located with the multipurpose room to have those performance capabilities. At the K-8 level, this gets a little bit more robust, beefed up. You still have the same orchestra and strings, band and art uses. But with additional support spaces such as practice rooms for the music and instrument storage. At the middle school level, it, it beefs up even more. So the VAPA programs can take on, we're showing two different kind of models for VAPA. One is more arts-focused, one is more music and drama-focused. So recognizing the need for 3D art versus a 2D art room. So something like a ceramics and a 3D art with a kiln here or painting and sketching happening in the 2D art room and an additional space for digital art, so photography, broadcasting, that sort of digital media. The music and drama side, yes, music and drama side, your orchestra strings, band room, and drama again with the storage and practice rooms. And again, these would ideally be located adjacent to a performance space like the multipurpose room. So a couple more sites or spaces that you'll see is the Innovation Lab. This is that, again, highly flexible space. It can be used for, you know, exploratory, hands-on, project-based learning, something really fun for the students to get in and tinker with. This site, this room would be shared use with the whole site. So in, in theory, the teacher would schedule time to take the class to the Innovation Lab for a lesson. And the Innovation Lab in an ideal adjacency would be paired with a room dedicated for the after-school program. So in our ed specs, we're showing a room for after-school, about a 1,200 square foot classroom with adjacent storage and toilets so that, so that that after, after-school program can utilize the Innovation Lab after hours to run their program and hopefully lessen the need to take over classrooms after those normal school hours. So right now we'll like to pause and field some questions. I know we've had a lot coming through the chat. Jim, if you want to jump back on.
I think we had one hand raised.
Yeah, you want to go ahead, Andrea, and ask, unmute the first person there? And then there's a couple of questions that we haven't answered yet in the chat that I'd like to read to everybody.
Okay, Jill, I'm going to unmute you so you can ask your question. You know, you are self-muted, Jill, if you want to unmute yourself. We can give that a try. Okay, I'm not able to unmute Jill.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and ask the first question here. And this might be for Mr. Rivera, Dr. Hanson. Speaking of expensive, where does the funding for the plan come from?
So currently we are in the development of the master plan, which is identifying all of our priorities for which we're going to take in front of the board. And then the board is going to approve a final plan. At that point, we'll be discussing how these priorities are funded. Generally, districts use one of two strategies in paying for facilities. Well, actually, one of three. One is to go after general obligation bond, which is probably the most popular. Another is taking out a loan certificate of participations and paying for that out of their general fund reserves or anything that is dedicated. And the other is a sale of property. Typically, the sale of property is not sufficient to cover up, to cover the entire debt that is created by the work that is being requested.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. We also have a lot of questions about Fletcher and the Mandarin program there. Joe Irvin, there's one question here. It says if there are already 200 kids in the program at Fletcher, how would they move?
Well, I mean, we would be essentially moving the program to the new site. So they, they would move with the program to the, the world languages magnet. So I think we answered that in a couple of different ways in the, in the chat there. But basically, we'd be looking at, as Fletcher continues to grow this program, we have a much greater opportunity at the Taft site to expand. And we'll, we'll show you pictures of what this could look like at the end because Taft is a much larger parcel so that we can get a full TK through eighth grade program on that site.
Mr. Irvin is correct, the property at Fletcher is less than half the size of the property at Taft. So the Taft property lends itself for expansion when the Fletcher property is quite limited.
The next question I have is you mentioned that funding will be explored after the plan has been accepted. Is there ample funding to update everything being shown here or will the upgrades be prioritized? And I think the answer is a master plan is generally greater than the ability to fund because it represents the long-term vision of the district. So as we've been going through this process, we've been asking every single group that we interact with. And we'll be asking the school sites as well, when they're looking at their plans, what are your highest priorities? And we're collecting all of those data points in order to take them to the board and run various scenarios for them based on what all the stakeholders in the district have said. So I think it's very important as you're participating in these site master plan committees to definitely share your input and what you feel the highest priorities at that site are because all that information will come to the board where the ultimate decisions reside regarding projects to be funded. Mr. Rivera, do you want to add anything to that?
No, budgeting is about, budgeting is about prioritizing. So you've touched on all the points and getting your, getting the community's input is very important and valuable as we decide how projects get rolled out in sequence and in scope.
And then our next question is we've had a lot of talk regarding class setup. Those are great, however, have we planned? I'm sorry, the chat jumps around a bit here when I'm reading. Those are, we've had a lot of talk regarding class setup. Those are great, however, we planned on cafeteria, have we planned on cafeteria modernization, particularly to rethink the nutrition that is served to the students as well as not having to eat outdoors during non-COVID times, of course. We are planning on modernizing and tracking the cost for improving the facilities, all the facilities at the various campuses. And this includes upgrades to the kitchen, serveries, outdoor lunch shelters to protect students when they are eating outside. And the improvements have been done in line with the goal set up in terms of our interviews with the school sites as well as the district's nutrition services. Another question we, I have here for the district is do you have a proposed timeline for these changes to or improvements to occur?
Yeah, Jim, I'm just answering that and I can't answer as fast as they're coming in.
I know they're coming in fast tonight.
The timetables, of course, as Mr. Rivera said, it's all tied together. We don't have timetables for these until priorities are set. So once priorities are set, funding is established, then the timetable will go into place based on those priorities.
And then I've got another question here from Mr. Irvin. What will happen to the students at Taft? What will be their homeschool? Where will those teachers go?
I would say right now, not only are we doing this facilities master plan, but we're also doing demographic studies to see kind of where populations are going to be in five and 10 years in the future. So there, as most people on the call might be aware, in Orange County, we're seeing a decline in enrollment across the whole county. And that's due to a lot of population changes and financial. Orange County is a very expensive place to live. So we're seeing a reduction in number of students coming to our schools. So as we're doing this demographic study, we're also going to at some point be looking at the, 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 the school boundaries, and that's going to play into this as well. So at this point, these are just plans, I would say. And as we get more information about those demographic studies, we'll also be sharing those in terms of where the numbers look like in the next five to 10 years.
Thanks, Joe. There's another question here for you. Are the plans for the magnet schools to be a lottery system? This lottery system seems to be more of a challenge in comparison to the system that's currently in place at the Mandarin immersion program. Maybe if you want to talk just a little bit about that and some of the thoughts for the magnets.
Yeah, so the magnets, the whole idea behind magnet schools is giving everyone the option, giving people choice in, in our district so that they, they can choose that they want a world languages magnet or they want a biomedical magnet. So when we have more magnets, we will have lotteries. But students will have a better chance of getting into a magnet school. Right now in McPherson, we have a waitlist of around 500 students because that's our only magnet school. So by developing more of them, we're hoping to give more people in the district choice. And then that will give everyone the opportunity to go to the, the magnet of their, their choice. So I hope that answered that question.
Yeah, and particularly it'll give people a choice of a magnet within their home community without having to necessarily drive all over the district. Andrea, any more hands raised?
We do have one more hand raised, so Marsha Brown, I'll be, oh, there you go.
Okay, hi, thank you for taking.
Okay, hi. Thank you for taking my question here. So, these presentations, the slides, are they going to be available somewhere on the district website, so I can review them? I missed a couple.
Yes, the same. You see the orangeusd.org/fmp. That will be your resource for all things facilities master plan. The presentations will be uploaded there, and I believe access to recordings of all of the town hall meetings.
In addition to that, the full educational specs will be up there, so not just the slides. There's a full spec there, that's a very long document. And then, you may not see all of the finalized plans. There's a section that says finalized plans. You may not see those until they're actually finalized by the sites, but you will see the documents in progress currently as it's sent out to the site committees.
Can I have a follow-up question, please? The slide that I missed was for Taft. That's where my kids go, and I didn't see any new facilities that they would be getting, like the other schools, like a new gym or whatever. We could totally use a new covered cafeteria, or even a gym, or a multipurpose room. So I don't know where to suggest that, but that would be awesome.
Hank, that's where we're going to go to here in about one minute. We're going to go through all the campuses in the Villa Park feeder area.
Do you have a new hand raised? Thank you, Marsha. A new hand raised, Derek Grucci?
Hey, okay. Hi, thanks, everybody, for doing this. I really appreciate you. I know what it takes to put these together. You guys have been working hard, so thank you. I'm excited about what could come from the Taft Academy with the consolidation of those programs. I was curious, with the reduced student bodies coming in with teacher attrition, consolidation sounds good, but is there the backing and the support and the plan to make sure that works? Because I would assume that any sort of immersion program is challenging, let alone five under one roof, or whatever you got planned. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, do you want to?
Well, I think, Mr. Irvin, since we're talking about programs, I'll defer to Mr. Irvin, then I'll talk about the facility.
Okay.
So, we're talking about having multiple immersion programs under one roof. Currently, at Jordan, we have a computer science and Spanish immersion going on at the same campus. So we would be able to do the same type of programming at a world languages magnet, where we have Mandarin, as well as another language, with those teachers sharing their students 50-50, which is kind of what's happening right now at all of our immersion.
In terms of facility standpoint and budget standpoint, we receive funding, the districts receive funding based off the number of students that we serve. So obviously, the more, the larger the room that we have for that school, the easier it is, from a fiscal standpoint, that we can operate that program. Also, it gives us flexibility in to qualifying for facility funding, as well as other funding. So the larger the campus, the more funding we receive. And we have methods of how we can serve the kids there that are running in different programs. We're already doing it now.
Great, thank you. Is there one more hand raised before we go back to the presentation, Andrea?
We'll just go back to Jill, who's had her hand raised. Since we started, Jill, you're able to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Okay. You're always able to type your questions into that question box, or go to, use the QR code to access the form to ask questions.
And we'll be sending out answers to questions after the meeting as well. We are saving the questions chat that is going on and trying to answer as many of those as possible during the meeting here. So please, everybody, go there. We'll have another occasion for question and answer after Andrea goes through the site plans. So to keep us on schedule, Andrea, do you want to start going through the, I will say, draft master plan proposals for each of the sites?
Yes, thank you. I know everyone's on the edge of their seat, but we do have a couple more slides to get through before we see the diagrams themselves. But I wanted to let you know before people start dropping off the line of kind of our next steps after tonight. So, how can you get involved? How can you participate? Get your voice heard? Please engage with your school site committee. The best way to do so is to contact your school site principal. They'll let you know what sort of meetings, what their engagement process is to garner feedback on these draft master plans. And express your opinion on those draft master plan diagrams. What did we get right? Where did we completely miss the mark? And think long-term. Again, this is not related to a short-term reopening of schools. This is really that five-to-10-year vision down the road. If you're here as part of a school site committee member, your role is to review those draft master plan diagrams with the other members of your school site committee. And spread the word. Let other folks know that the draft master plan diagrams are ready for review, that your principal is taking those comments. That process will be happening until mid-February, when we meet one-on-one back with the principal. The principals will be, will be ready for you with a packet of materials. One of those being a follow-up questionnaire that can help guide the conversations that you have with your school site committee. And then again, in late February, or mid-February, we'll be meeting one-on-one with the principals for them to download that information back to us, and we'll try to resolve the site diagrams right then and there in that meeting. The materials that the principals will receive are the existing and proposed site plans, both digitally and by the end of this week, every principal will have, or actually, I'll say Monday. Because of the weekend, they'll have printed versions of the existing and proposed site diagrams. That questionnaire I mentioned, they'll have a copy of the site needs assessment, and that snapshot in time that documented the deficiencies at the sites, the educational specifications, the full document, and again, meetings, recordings of these town hall meetings pertinent to the site. As you look at the diagrams, there's a few things to note as far as how to interpret them. If you see, and again, they're very diagrammatic. This is really just to, the site diagrams are really in place to project a cost. So there's three different types of costs that we're looking at when we develop these diagrams. If you see a solid color box, a box filled with color, that is modernization. And what that means is updating the finishes, replacing the floors, paint on the walls, other wall finishings, ceilings, lighting, technology, whatever that space really needs. So, once these projects get approved, find funding, and become actual projects, that's when it'll be determined the level of modernization that that facility would require. If you see boxes with a kind of striped hatch of color through them, that means that space would be reconfigured to become something new. So that's an existing building where the walls would need to be either torn down or rebuilt in a different configuration to meet those ed spec diagrams. If you see a white box with a color at the edge, that represents new construction. So that's new stick-built construction is how it will be costed. That does not mean portable classrooms. Last slide before I get into the diagrams themselves. As we're looking at all the diagrams, we want to make sure that we're carrying a line of parity across all sites. So, across all sites, we're aiming to really plan to these big themes, building from the district's edge strategic vision, implementing the educational specifications, following the state school facility program square footage standards, co-locating programs like kindergarten, preschool, and transitional kindergarten in spaces that are appropriately designed and sized for those uses, together with a dedicated play area, incorporating interior and/or exterior environments of collaboration, using the inclusion model for special education and preschool programs. So, finding a right spot for those programs on each campus, addressing parking and drop-off configurations, and addressing safety and security. So, seeing the administration as that secured access point at the front door. Okay. Now we'll get into the diagrams, and we're going to zoom in a little bit so that we can see the building core a little more closely. So here's the existing diagram at Fletcher. Fletcher being a tier-three site, we see existing classrooms in orange, administration in light green, shared spaces like the NPR and library in a darker pink, electives or specialized rooms in this lighter pink, and other toilets and storage and that sort of thing, the support spaces in the darker green. These dashed lines represent portable classrooms, and this dashed line without a color is the existing lunch shelter. As we go to the draft master plan proposal, we see all classrooms receiving modernization with enhancement to the outdoor space within these atrium areas. You see kinder, transitional kindergarten, preschool grouped together at the kinderhard courts, and some reconfiguration at this kinder classroom to turn it from a traditional classroom into supported kindergarten classroom with toileting facilities and a workroom. There's also a spot of reconfiguration next to the media center and NPR for the new learning resource center. And in this case, since it is a tier-three, we have some remaining portables on site. At this first passive diagrams, that's one way we can help cut down on the overall cost of the whole master plan. Again, these are items that we'll be talking about with the school site committee and see what's appropriate to move forward with. Scott, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, and just, the reason mainly because of those portables is also they're brand-new. They just went into place this school year, so those are something that we wouldn't necessarily remove right away, because we are leasing them, and it's something that we put in the site improvements for as well. It doesn't show in this picture, but Fletcher has been improved in the front of the school with new landscape and some ADA improvements. So that will help with the overall cost once we get to the plan, because these things have already been done. So the school looks a lot better from the front, and it will continue through this plan to look better throughout. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, jumping to the next site is Noel Canyon. So, as I zoom into that building core, again, existing classrooms in orange, shared spaces that NPR in the middle of this cluster. The library, it looks like it's in a portable classroom right now, with some additional portables for the after-school program. We jump forward to the proposed master plan diagram. Starting off at the kinder area, we have all kindergarten classrooms and transitional kindergarten grouped together around the kindergarten play yard. This striped orange room here is a reconfigured space for kindergarten, and these white boxes are new kindergarten classrooms. We finish out this side of lower primary with three more new classrooms and toilets with an outdoor collab for those classrooms to utilize. In the existing building, we've taken these clusters of four classrooms and incorporated an interior collaboration zone with access from all three remaining classrooms into that collaboration space. In the center here, we configure this interior area for the learning resource center, and this space here for the innovation lab. Crossing over to the other side of campus, the upper primary grades, we have, excuse me, a collaboration area here in the center for all of these classrooms to access, and the media center located at the heart of school. Off, over to the left here, we have a new building for the multipurpose room, stage, kitchen and serving area, three visual and performing arts rooms, and the after-school area. With this new construction, we're showing a new lunch shelter. The existing lunch shelter would still be utilized by the site as a shade structure, possibly to support play, or it could be repurposed into some other use of shade. Moving over to Olive Elementary, this was a challenging site due to the grade, as you can imagine those who've been there. So this site, we see some portables here for kindergarten, or transitional kindergarten, and some of those counseling spaces. We see this existing gym, with a basement, which presents a unique opportunity there. So I'll just shift forward to the proposed master plan diagram. And in this, first off, I'll mention, we do show buildings that have multiple levels. We'll bring that other level, in this case, it's the basement underneath the gym, out onto neighboring houses. So, that does scoot underneath this gym here. We're not taking over any additional properties. But on this draft master plan diagram, I'll start off with kindergarten. We do show in the place of those existing portables, a new kindergarten, transitional kindergarten classroom building with separate spaces for preschool play and kindergarten play. We see a new two-story building here. With a tight site like this, sometimes you've got to go up, create your own land. So we have classrooms, as well as the innovation lab and after-school on the ground floor. And on the second floor, more classrooms with the collaboration area above it. Moving over here, we keep the gym as it is with some modernization. Underneath in the basement, we have our three VAPA spaces and additional storage. These improvements would come along with ADA and accessibility improvements with an elevator, and anything needed for stairs or other exiting requirements is maybe required. In this existing building here, we see a reconfiguration for the learning resource center coupled with the college center. So all of your counseling needs are all in one spot. Administration, we're showing being reconfigured and added to, get a square footage that more closely matches that of the educational specifications. This building here, shown as reconfigured for the media center, the remaining classroom wings on this side next to the hardcourts, and also on this side for STCPK or preschool and preschool classrooms would receive modernization with some outdoor collaboration spaces for those classrooms. And last little detail here, with the lunch shelter, new kitchen and serving facility. Just zoom in a little. Okay, moving to Serrano Elementary. We see these cluster of four classroom kind of pods going along that frontage with admin and kinder at the front corner of the site. In the master plan diagram, we show for the majority, those classrooms remaining as classrooms and receiving modernization, as well as the front door administration use. Over here, where we already have the kindergarten play yard and transitional kindergarten and preschool, we've changed this building, this existing building, into our two additional kindergarten rooms with a faculty workroom. So that building would receive all reconfigured spaces. Moving on down to the left, reconfiguring this existing building for the three VAPA spaces and your kitchen serving spaces with collaboration, outdoor collaboration areas in between all of those classroom buildings. Out towards the back, there's a new student quad with their existing lunch shelter being relocated to accommodate the new construction here of media center, learning resource center, as well as the after-school and innovation lab functions. To the site, we're showing an expansion of hardcourts, since we did chew up some hardcourts here with this new construction. So expanding the hardcourts, the idea here is to keep the trees and incorporate your upper and lower primary play areas, not wanting to take away anything from the site, through shown a relocation of your outdoor theater. And last note here is to reorganize the parking lot out towards the rear of the site. All right, moving on towards Villa Park. Beautiful new assembly quad area, finger wing classroom buildings with a few portables, and existing NPR already in place. So as we look at the draft master plan diagram, we do show some new construction here, even though it's a tier-three site, just to try to fit everything in permanent buildings here, especially when you especially when you see some of the spaces that we're adding on. So, this classroom wing would remain and with modernization. And now we're showing new construction to build upon that existing classroom wing with your three specialty VAPA spaces, toilets, a faculty workroom and the media center at the heart of campus, opening up onto that upgraded quad, the collaboration area. The other existing classroom wings would receive modernization. And here, at this classroom wing, transitioning to classrooms into the learning resource center with a neighboring innovation lab. Admin at the front received modernization as well as the existing multipurpose room and existing two transitional kindergarten classrooms and finishing out this kindergarten area with three new classrooms for kindergarten. Improvements to the ground plane of that kinder area, hard court area and play fields. Right, then as we jump to Taft Elementary. Let me see the, excuse me, the admin there, front and center with various classroom wings coming off from there as well as little kind of four-pack classroom buildings and the kindergarten area up front on the left, or excuse me, right side. So as we look at the master plan diagram, we're showing that kindergarten area being finished out, keeping the existing kinder uses since they have toileting facilities, workrooms, keeping them and showing modernization, adding on new kindergarten and transitional kindergarten classroom wing buildings to finish that out. With these parallel classroom wings over on this side of admin as well as this side, we're showing, filling that in with an internal collab area, collaboration space for those classrooms to spill out into. So those collab areas are wide enough to accommodate the circulation that would happen between classes and then while classes in session would be utilized as this nice flexible space is that extension of the classroom. At the center of campus, we have an enhanced area for the student quad, reconfigured admin at the front, beyond the quad, reconfigured building for your media center and learning resource center. And showing new construction here, a new NPR and food service facilities with lunch shelter and possibly an outdoor amphitheater off the back of that stage. More new construction, three VAPA spaces and innovation lab and after-school program. Large and small electives, including science. And we had to pick up one more classroom, so we grouped it in with this new construction. Now, there's already been, we've already had some comments back from leadership as to how to organize this new construction. So as we chat more with the school site committee, we'll want to hear your thoughts on that too and how we can make this the best plan that works for your site and all of your school site committees. Just a last note on this plan are some improvements to the parking and drop-off areas, to try to make those more efficient and with a better flow. Okay, and finally, we get to Saravilla Middle School. I'll just jump right to the master plan diagram. Up here at the front, showing this whole building being reconfigured to accommodate your administration functions as well as a special education moderate to severe classroom. This wellness center stays in place. These kind of round classroom wheels would remain in place and become modernized and then have some reconfigured areas kind of in the center to be shared with all of these classrooms, those collaboration areas as well as the outdoor space. So that can be a really robust environment for those classrooms to all share and utilize. Between those two wheels is our central quad. So, you know, a color at this point denoting some, denoting some improvement to that ground plane with your outdoor theater. As we march back along the campus, reconfiguration of this building for the media center and the learning resource center that have of counselors. Towards the back, modernization of your specialty elective spaces with a reconfigured space at your multipurpose room for your large elective, ideally something in the VAPA music realm. And again, showing here that shared gym NPR for the feeder pattern and it's likely improperly labeled right now, but showing a new gym NPR here with appropriate toileting and storage facilities to support this feeder area. Existing changing rooms would receive modernization. And last note here is to rework this parking towards the back as we're able to remove the portables that currently sit back there. So I think we'll open it back up for Q and A.
Andrea, can we go back to Villa Park Elementary?
You bet.
I wanted to clarify something and maybe something that we missed as well as the staff, but there's a classroom, you could see the, the main classroom, when we call it the thirty wing just above the quad, so just, just above the quad, that's actual permanent building. But those next two rows of buildings are actually portables that are on a raised foundation and have steps to them and whatnot. So they look like permanent buildings, but they are not, they're modular. So we would need to plan to replace that section of classrooms with a new classroom building in order to replace those eight classrooms. So we're looking at a new classroom building, eight classrooms. And maybe it would come off as an L shape from the existing, from that new portion that we're building off the existing classrooms, one through six on that side, I believe it is. And that could be what we do is just do a big L-shaped building there or break it up just depending on the flow.
Okay, thank you. And that, folks, is why we label them draft at this point. We know they're going to change.
So let's, what I wanted to say is let's update that prior to sending it out to the site so we can work on that in a subsequent meeting.
You bet.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that right now. Andrea, does anybody have their hand raised?
Still Jill has her hand raised. So Jill, if you would like to unmute yourself, you can.
Hello?
Hi.
Um, you've since answered most of my questions. I just now need to say thanks so very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Welcome. So if anyone else wants to ask a question directly, please feel free to raise your hand. I'll go to a couple of questions in the, in the chat right now that aren't, haven't been answered yet. Is there a plan to construct these changes in phases? For instance, there are significant changes at Taft and construction will likely overlap with the school year. How can the district facilitate construction while learning is occurring? So, Mr. Harvey, I think that's right up your alley.
Sure, there's, there are several ways you could do this. You could, you could bring portables to the, the school site and have students in what we call interim housing. So if you hear that, it's not really where the students live. It's where they house students for learning. So they call it student housing. And that will be, you know, somewhere on the campus or you have another site that's near to your facility that acts as a host site where you could put portables there and, and in essence, have almost two schools at one site while you're doing portions of the construction. Or it could be phased, as you mentioned, to have areas of the campus being worked on while students are there and vice versa. So, Mr. Rivera, did you want to add to that?
No, I think you've touched on it. When we, when decisions are made of what's going to be developed and constructed, then we come up with some very, very detailed plans and coordination of how all that would be laid out to create the least disruption to our instructional program. So that's part of the work that goes on in determining what gets done and when it gets done. So that's just part of the process.
And then just to answer, I know there's a question about the sixth grade and I just touched on the portables that were out there. That includes the sixth grade portables. There's three portables also on the, near the play fields. So that will be included in that. And when I said eight classrooms, I included those three because the secondary building of those portable buildings is, really houses the media center and a computer lab and is, is much larger. So the size of that into a new building in eight classrooms will include those sixth grade classrooms.
Yeah, if you go to the existing plan, Andrea. So yeah, it's the, it's, it's those three buildings up in that area.
Yes.
Clusters up in that area.
So it equates, it equates in my mind to eight, but it may be nine classroom, but we'll figure that out, you know, in the future.
Yeah, it looks like about six classrooms that we need to replace there because speech is part of the learning center part of the learning center and the computer lab is the innovation lab.
Right.
The library. So it looks like we need six teaching stations to get the count to work.
Okay, and the collabs.
Yeah, although we, actually, it still might be eight because we had already reorganized them on the plan. So it's eight teaching stations we need to accommodate. Okay. We don't have, I think we've answered every other question on, that's been submitted with the questions other than the, a couple of blank ones which we've covered in our Q and A. Does anyone else have a question they want to ask by raising your hand?
One additional question came up about the parking lots.
I missed that one. Go ahead.
Have you already talked about that one?
No, no, go ahead. I missed that one.
Has the committee discussed enhancing the parking lots with these drafts to enhance the drop-off pickup area? Yes, and it's, it's a requirement in many cases in some of these schools. You have infrastructure in the parking lot that's way past the code, meaning it's, it's safe, but there's additional code that has come up in time that we have to upgrade that code. Once we touch the parking lot in any way or really the facility, it's part of that code upgrade requirement to do ADA walkways, which means new upgraded pathways for disabled individuals and others that need a better passage to, from the parking lot into the building. So yes, that is in the plans. Pickup and drop-offs are included. You won't see the details of that in these plans because they're conceptual. But once we get to the, the actual planning process and the funding is established, then we will fully vet those parking lots.
I'd like to add that to that, Mr. Harvey, is that depending on the work that is being considered, we also have conversations with the city. So if you look at the front of Villa Park, that was about a year, a year and a half process working with the city and the planning department within the city for what you see that's in place now. So not only do we determine, do we make decisions internally, but we work with our municipalities as to how we can best serve our community.
I think we've answered all the questions. I want to thank everybody on the call here tonight for all your very thorough questions. Please, if you have additional things that come up after this or as you review the presentation, that will be posted to the district's website. There is a question form there that you can submit additional inquiries to the district and receive answers. I would say to anybody on the, on the call tonight that is not currently on a site committee and you're interested in participating on one of the site committees, please contact the principal of that site and they will let you know when the meetings are occurring at that campus. And a number of people are saying right now, thank you for your time and efforts to improve our schools for the community and thank you to the presenters and it's very appreciated. And hopefully, at the end of this process, we will have a master plan that reflects the needs of the Orange Unified School District and the Villa Park community and shows a path forward to the improvements at the various campuses while providing high-quality programs for students and choice for students within their, and parents within their communities. Mr. Rivera or Superintendent Hanson, would you like to add anything here at the closing?
Yeah, I'll just say a few words. Thank you so much, Mr. Kissel, and to the staff at LPA for being our partner in this work in defining the vision for a master plan for our elementary and middle schools. Our goal is to innovate and to provide a quality educational program to all our students in world-class facilities and to ensure that the future generations of Orange Unified have outstanding opportunities to excel in their passions. And we're really excited about these plans and we look forward to the next step to roll it out to the school site level. So any parent or community members on their school sites, please connect with your principal. And if you'd like to give additional input, all of these plans will be on the website. Even the recording will be posted. Is that correct, Mr. Harvey? I believe the recording will also be up there and you'll be able to revisit the plans. All the diagrams will also be posted online. So thank you very much for being here this evening and asking your questions and participating in this town hall session.
Great, everybody, Mr. Rivera, go ahead.
Yes, I just have a few closing comments. Maintaining and improving school facilities is a daunting task and provides a litany of challenges, especially right now during the COVID. The long-range master plan will provide a laser-light focus on facility priorities and needs. This instrument will also be key in pursuing external funding opportunities for the district. Our community and parents' input is paramount in developing and providing our students the best learning environment that they are entitled to while being fiscally responsible. I want to thank, I want to thank you for your participation tonight as we welcome your continual input and support as we complete this vital document. I want to thank our facilities team for their commitment and the collaboration with our experienced consultant, LPA. I appreciate the support of our governing board, Dr. Hanson and the administrative team for your participation in tonight's presentation. If, as you hear this presentation, the one thing we are all can agree, we're very passionate about the work that we're doing and how can we provide the best learning environment for our students. So thank you for being here tonight and we appreciate your feedback and input. Have a good night.
Thank you.